Roll call, Mr. Zebly, please.
Mrs. Denny?
Here.
Mrs. Ellis?
Here.
Mrs. Essler? Ms. Hilfertie? Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Powell? Mr. Cisak?
Here.
Mr. Tinsley?
Here.
Mr. Armour?
Here. Thank you.
I would, I want to note too for the record, Mr. Zebly, I know you called Ms. Essler's name. She has, she's just popped up on the Zoom, so she's also in attendance.
Mark, Mrs. Essler present.
Thank you, Dr. Steinhold. Before we get to tonight's meeting started, I'd like to say a few things in reference to some of the local issues that have been floating around our community. There's been significant amount of social media discussion about Agenda Item 10.14. Just a little bit of history and brief discussion about the procedure, I feel is appropriate. As elected school board members, our responsibility is to oversee and guide the district. The administration is responsible for the day-to-day operation of our schools. The superintendent, as head of the, as head of the administration, brings forward most, if not all items for board consideration. While the past year has been unfortunately dominated by the unprecedented COVID pandemic and the main question of how do we educate our children, there are however, a few other topics that we need to discuss. In June of 2020, Dr. Steinhold brought the topic of inequity task force to the board's attention. The board has been considered, considering that topic since then. If I recall, Dr. Steinhold recommended a training program from the University of Pennsylvania. While the University of Pennsylvania is a respected national educational institution, the board felt that one-size-fits-all training program was put in the cart before the horse. As a board, we rejected that idea and asked the Dr. Steinhold to go back to the drawing board and present the board with different options to discuss this topic. Agenda Item 10.14 is Dr. Steinhold's current suggestion and is on the agenda for a vote to see. I think it's important to state what this motion is and what it is not. The motion is to give the superintendent the authority to establish a steering committee to come up with a charter that sets forth a mission, a structure, and a responsibility with one to two board members on the committee. This motion is about the Pendelco district, Pendelco students, Pendelco staff, and Pendelco community. It is not a tool created by, it is a discussion tool created by us and for us. The motion sets up an advisory committee that will make recommendations, and I do repeat that, recommendations to the board, at which time those recommendations will be publicly discussed and voted upon prior to implementation. Here are a few things that the motion is not. It is not a socialist plot to indoctrinate students with socialist agenda. It is not disguised quota scheme. It is not shoving other people's politics down other people's throats. It is not a committee that will be bring, that will make binding decisions. It's an advisory committee in nature. It is also not a critical race theory. A statistic that Dr. Steinhold provided us indicated that those Pendelco School District students who are economically disadvantaged, only one-third participate in AP courses and only 5% score in the advanced math program. Does anybody really think those individuals are all people of color? I can assure you they're not. Remember, the goal here is at Pendelco to provide as many educational opportunities as possible for our students so they can succeed. We want the group, excuse me, we want the group I just mentioned above to succeed regardless of their economic status. It is conversation of the sort that can lead to mutual understanding of each other within the Pendelco School District, and it's our mission to fulfill that to all students. We as a board are aware that in today's world, words themselves have been weaponized and used by individuals, media entities, and political parties as triggers for certain agendas. The committee will have to start from the beginning, including the title of the committee itself, and realize that even the words diversity, equality, and inclusion mean different things to different people, including the fact those words concern or absolutely concerning to some people. The bottom line is very simple. The beginning of the conversation is an attempt to understand each other in the Pendelco community just a little bit more. Please be mindful as you comment tonight, whether you're for the motion or against the motion. Things are not clear on, clear-cut on this topic. If they were, we would not have, had the need for a committee. Those members of the community who are in favor of this will need to come to an understanding why the opposition, why the opposition to it, and those opposed will need to understand the reason why there were others in favor. I choose my words carefully. I didn't say that other people had to accept others' rationales. I focused on the words of understanding. Understanding each other is a two-way street. That is all this is. It's a beginning of a conversation in the Pendelco community in an effort to gain mutual understanding, which allows us to provide a better opportunity for each of the Pendelco students. I have learned that there is nothing wrong with having a conversation about tough issues, and I will be voting in favor of this motion. Thank you for that. Number two on the agenda tonight is the approval of minutes. Motion is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 27, 2021. Do I have this motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 2.02 is the invoice listing. Motion is to approve the invoice listing for January through February 2021. Do I have this motion?
So moved.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 2.03, Ms. Powell.
Yeah. I apologize. Too many screens up. As of December 31, 2020, Pendelco's balance was 47,259,129. During January 2021, the local, state, and federal revenues totaled 1,466,017. Disbursements were issued in the amount of 3,661,220. As of January 31, 2021, Pendelco's current balance is 45,63926. The motion is to approve the treasurer's report for January 2021. Do I have this motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 2.04 is a budget transfer report. Motion is to approve the budget transfer report for January through February of 2021. Do I have this motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Number three on tonight's agenda is a student representative report to the board. We have Autumn, Felicia, and Gianna here tonight with us. They're going to give us a update on the district. Are you ladies ready to get back to school? We're looking forward to getting you there. So you'll hear in Dr. Steinhold's presentation here shortly, a little bit of our plan and when you can expect to get yourself back in the class. We're going to turn it over to you.
So let's start first with Autumn Brown.
Hi, I'm Autumn Brown, and math, English, and science honor societies are now offering student-to-student tutoring skills and writing respective courses. Tutoring has been held over Zoom for any student that is interested in getting extra help. Student-to-student tutoring can be seen as extremely beneficial for students since the student may feel more comfortable reaching out for help other, from another student instead of a teacher since they could possibly understand them better. Student tutoring could also put less pressure on teachers as there might be many students that could use some extra help on the topic they are learning. Student-to-student tutoring is shown to be a good way for student interaction while also lending a hand to a student that may be struggling. And a new committee has started in Sun Valley called the PBIS Students Team, which means Positive Behavior Intervention and Support. This team focuses on making a positive change to Sun Valley culture while also strengthening the community. This team will also be discussing the decisions about what expectations Sun Valley students should be following and what rewards should be given to encourage positive behaviors. Mr. Pilekis sent out a self-nomination form to apply for becoming a part of the team. PBIS is looking for students who show leadership skills and have a great strength of character. This team is a great way for students to work together and to find the best possible solutions that will be beneficial for Sun Valley and their students as a whole.
Next, we have Felicia.
Thank you, Autumn. Hi, I'm Felicia Cristaldi. Seniors have been sending in their post-secondary plans to the guidance office. This is, there's a video up on the Sun Valley website that features all of the submissions. The video is updated weekly with the news from colleges, universities, training centers, and employers that the students are getting into. Congratulations to everyone and keep on sending in submissions as we receive them. Wrestling had three wrestlers qualify for regions at the recent district tournament. Timmy Kearney finished fourth, Shane Holtholder finished third, and Ryan Kakka finished first, each in their respective weight classes. We wish them luck in regions.
Thank you, Felicia. Gianna?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Gianna Ellis, and one of the major events occurring in our school at the moment is our intense preparation and planning for the upcoming AP exams. The exams are scheduled for May 2021, but obviously this year comes with its fair share of extra complications. In the loss of our block periods and second half of Wednesdays, the courses have had to move at an intense pace in order to keep up with the AP curriculum schedule. We were also recently informed of the various options in which we have to actually take the test. From at-home virtual, in-school virtual to in-person pencil-and-paper exams, teachers have been helping students explore the advantages and disadvantages of both. Fortunately, advanced placement teachers and the program coordinator are organizing practice tests in order to mimic the exam and make that setting decision a little bit easier. They're also working hard in coordinating ways that Sun Valley can safely host the AP exam for all of the students who are signed up to actually take them. And in addition to preparation, preparation for our upcoming exams, students have been also exploring their course selection options for the 2021-2022 school year. With the coordination of our guidance counselors, this course selection process is scheduled to take place next month. In the recent push for more in-person schooling, along with students beginning to plan for next year, there's been a lot of newfound excitement and enthusiasm among the student body. Spring sports are getting ready to begin workouts. Students are pondering the idea of more in-person interaction with each other, and course selection is suggesting a chance for a normal school year next fall. These events have seemed to spread a new sense of optimism over students and teachers both.
Thank you, Gianna.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Hopefully, we see you ladies back in the hallway soon. You guys would like to go ahead and sign off? You're welcome to. We appreciate the report. Number four here on our agenda brings us to Dr. Steinhold and his superintendent's report. All yours, Dr. Steinhold.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Armour. Just give me one moment to adjust to a screen share so I can flip over to a slide deck presentation. So thank you for one moment. Thank you. Is that coming pretty clear? Mr. Armour, can you see the presentation screen?
Yes, it is clear. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So thanks for the opportunity. Congratu-, welcome to everybody who is joining us here this evening. Great to have this kind of participation and interest in our school board meetings. Tonight in my presentation, I'll be spending some time to discuss, you know, what we're calling a Pendelco CARES resolution, essentially the diversity, equity, and inclusion resolution that I know has generated a number of levels of different interest. Talking about kindergarten registration, provide an update on our comprehensive plan survey and the development of our updated comprehensive plan, and also talk about something very exciting, you know, as Mr. Armour just addressed, talking to the students. Are they excited about getting back into, always four days a week rather than just two days a week, which is really our pathways to reopening discussion. And I'm happy to talk about some really well-timed and necessary updates to our health and safety plan now enable us to get kids back into school. It's been, you know, almost a year. You know, we're going to be very, very soon approaching, you know, the annual anniversary of the time when we had to shut schools down for COVID. And schools haven't been the same since. And fortunately, there's some brighter skies ahead. I'm happy to go through the changes in the guidance to show how it could potentially get to a place where we can merge our cohorts and get more kids back into school. We know that a lot of kids are struggling. You know, we know that a lot of kids are not themselves. You know, we, we understand parents who say, you know, my, my, my kids have been kind of just down, you know, kind of suffering through the winter blues, not feeling excited about things. And no wonder, you know, it is, it's not normal to live a life that's abnormal. For a kid, you know, who is going through an experienced time right now, this is an abnormal life when kids want to be in school every day. They want to be doing their activities. They don't want to be separated. They like to be social. You know, it's good to see that we're actually getting closer to that possibility for kids. Happy to talk about our developments there based on the updated guidance from the Justice County Health Department. Our first item, diversity, equity, inclusion. Had a long conversation with our school board last Wednesday in Wednesday night's study session. I was asked to provide background on the diversity, equity, and inclusion agenda item, which I did. And I know recognizing that that, we had limited participation at that meeting, much greater participation tonight at this meeting. So it's important to go back and to review some of the key concepts that I shared with the board last week, and I'm happy to do that again tonight. I think what you'll see is it follows up on a lot of the comments that the board president made earlier in the beginning of this meeting. But you know, before I begin my presentation on this topic, I really have to follow up with board president's really sensible and his heartfelt sentiments. And I have to note, you know, I'm, I'm just really frankly, you know, very disheartened over how this topic has somehow been managed to be mangled and polluted on social media for all the wrong reasons. I have a colleague who had advised me some time ago. He said, you know, George, don't use the words diversity and inclusion and equity if you can avoid it. He said, you know, kids are okay with it, but some adults, you know, still aren't comfortable with it. And I was naive, naive, honestly. I thought that we were past those days. But I'm not sure. Over the last several days, you know, I've seen the most absurd and frankly, patently false material on this topic, on this simple agenda topic that's been on social media, on partisan blogs. I mean, you name it. You know, groups with our origin, original addresses, you know, business origin addresses outside of our district, people who don't even have any connection to Pendelco, you know, weighing in with criticisms and falsehoods. The problem though is when innocent people have their reputations impugned and damaged and questioned, actually had to see people put the name of some of our teachers, of a teacher on social media in a post that kind of questioned the lesson that she taught and questioned her motives, and part of a principal's email to a parent's inquiry was shared. There's no reason for that to happen. It's indecent. I mean, our employees have a right to expect a candid and frank level of communication. When they respond to parent emails, will remain private. And both of these educators are outstanding people. Their intentions are really good ones. Their actions are entirely proper. These are people with four decades of combined public service, and they deserve better. So look, I, I believe our teachers do everything they can to help our kids. I really do. I think we have the best staff in the region. And they don't have time indoctrinate kids, a tournament of so-called social justice warriors. I, I just can't tolerate seeing any teacher's name on social media being disrespected, their reputations tarred. I find it disgraceful, especially when I looked into their work. I looked into the assignment and it was appropriate and aligned to the standards. So when you know the facts, the facts, something that should matter, you know, you understand. And it's just ridiculous to see someone who does a great job be questioned and be picked apart on social media. They deserve an apology, and I hope that the critical social media posts are removed. All they did was do what they're paid to do, which is be a well-intentioned teacher, doing her job, making sure kids are engaged with topics that kids want to talk about. You know, criticism's never a solution. And spreading misinformation and stoking fear are the methods that people use when on the wrong side of a topic. And I believe our district's on the right side of this topic, so I'm going to avoid the methods. And in this next part of my presentation, I just provide clarity and facts, clarity and facts. So in our presentation last week, I had said that, you know, if diversity, equity, inclusion are terms that people are not quite comfortable with, really in the end, what we're looking to do is to get people involved in a committee. So it could be called Pendelco CARES, Pendelco, Committed to Acceptance, Respect, Equity, and Support. Pendelco CARES Committee. If it's easier to call it the Pendelco CARES Committee than a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, then so be it because it still advances the ball, right? It still gets us to the kind of acts of kindness and consideration and collaboration that we want to see in our schools every day. So as I do the presentation, think about that. We're talking about a Pendelco CARES Committee. If that's what works and that moves the ball forward and that helps, you know, save the experience for the one, two, three, many kids, whatever the number is, who feel that they're not accepted, they're not tolerated, they feel that their opportunities aren't as equal as others. If that's what it takes, then that's the name that we can use for the committee. Frankly, I thought the steering committee would develop a name and bring that back to the board for the board to approve it. Whatever it takes to move the ball forward, I'm in support of it. So here's the history behind this committee. On June 24th of 2020, the school board had on its motion, a motion called Pendelco Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force. The motion was to approve the administrative recommendation for the formation of a district-wide diversity, equity, and inclusion task force as presented. The as-presented part is important. That happened way back on June 24, 2020. That information was put on our board agenda, and it was taken to the board for their consideration. The board approved that motion unanimously, unanimously. For the minutes show following a motion by Mrs. Ellis and secondary Ms. Powell, the above motions were unanimously approved. So our board members who were present at that meeting, Ms. Ellis, Ms. Danny, Ms. Essler, Ms. Hilfertie, Ms. Powell, Mr. Cisak, Mr. Tinsley, Mr. Armour, already approved a diversity, inclusion, and equity committee. That's in the record, and that's, that was a place that we have at, and we've at least established that. So it's important to know the history behind why this is here again. To be clear, it's already been approved unanimously by all board members who were present at that meeting. I said as presented. The important point was as presented referenced one of my memos to the Pendelco Board of School Directors, which offered a justification for my reasoning behind recommending that the board support, approve the creation of a diversity, equity, and inclusion task force. But it also referenced joining the Delaware Valley Consortium for Equity and Excellence. The school board was clear, you know, they weren't comfortable in doing that, you know, just yet or perhaps ever. They wanted to take time. They wanted to hear more. So the school board was doing good governance, right? They wanted more information, and they had not approved participation in that outside membership. They felt we could do it ourselves. So good governance and a commitment to precision on my part forced me to come back to the board with the agenda item again, a second time. Because I couldn't move forward saying, well, you approved joining a committee, and that was the as-presented material, when in fact, they didn't want us to be a part of the committee. So it was clear that I need to make, I need to do this the right way. So we moved forward and said, let's bring this back. That's why we had another vote. Essentially, it was procedural, right? This was back on the agenda initially, procedural, just to recommit to the unanimous vote that had already been taken and passed to have a diversity, inclusion, and equity committee. So what was in that, what's in the resolution now, right? We decided that I brought it to the board as a resolution so that we wouldn't have that misunderstanding, right? So to be very clear, you know, why are we doing this? What's the purpose? Where, what, what are the grounded terms that need to be in the resolution? It says where was, we're committed to enable all students to achieve, succeed, and excel. Whereas we recognize that diverse equity and inclusion is a priority grounded in principles. We recognize that when educational organizations are committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion, student learning and outcomes improve. We recognize that a diversity of perspectives produces a more energized and dynamic work and academic environment for our staff. We recognize the value and importance of culturally relevant training and ongoing professional development for our staff in regards to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we believe that the diversity exists in our community and among our community members is integral to our vision and goals. We acknowledge that educational excellence includes a commitment to equity and the opportunities provided to students and the resulting outcomes. So be it resolved that the board gives direction to the superintendent to establish a steering committee, a steering committee with the task of developing a charter that will establish and delineate the missions, the responsibilities, the duties, the structure, the membership, and it provide progress updates back to the board at each regular board meeting. So be it resolved that the board assign members, because it's important to have board members as representatives on such a committee, to members of this as active members of the committee. That was the procedural step to go back and to ensure that I had the authority to move forward with such a committee, knowing that it had already been approved, but it was also approved tied to membership in a group that the board has not yet supported and joined. Totally understood that. So that was back on the agenda, hopeful that we can move forward and clean up a procedural technical issue. What's not in the resolution? All sorts that people have read about in social media posts and contacted me. Inaccurate representations promoted by people don't even live in our district. Outrageous comments that encourage division. Socialism, Marxism, critical race theory. That wasn't in the, in, it's not in the resolution. Plans to indoctrinate children, force values and morals or family ideals on a child. That's not in the resolution. Plans to replace our curriculum with a core diversity curriculum material. That's not in the resolution. Fear-mongering misrepresentations, not in the resolution. They're not there because they're not to be. So what prompted the work? Again, we talked about that, you know, our board president explained in history. Since we took that out, as you know, there's a growing movement in corporations, schools, universities, communities just to assess whether our actions match the aspirational and well-intentioned words that we say. And we're learning more now, right? People will say, what? I never heard of these issues. They must not have existed. Well, what we're seeing is students are having the courage to speak about the effects of inequity on their school experience. They are having the courage to come forward and say, I need to tell you something. I had an experience that really wasn't what I should have experienced. And we're hopeful, of course, that that unanimous support that's already been established remains in place. Why a committee? The wrong reasons would be it's trendy, while all the neighboring districts have one in place. It's a feel-good measure. It checks a box. The right reasons? Well, achievement gaps still persist. The academic performance of disaggregated subgroups is unacceptably low. Too few students in these subgroups are taking rigorous coursework. Staff are proactively asking for guidance and training in this work. I had a focus group with 20 elementary teachers, wonderful people, and asked them for feedback on our comprehensive planning. Number one item, what do you need? They said, we need, we need help. We need, we would like some, some professional development on issues about gender identity. You know, when students talk about gender identity issues in our classroom, how do we respond to that? It's apolitical. How do we respond to that? It's supportive and loving without pushing an agenda. They're asking for this help so that they can do their jobs well. Ready for life. What does that mean? It means you're, you're ready for these things that they're going to experience in a workplace. They're going to be working with people unlike themselves that are a little different. Committee consists, can determine why are our efforts to attract and retain more qualified minority applicants not being met? Why is that? You know, we're trying, right? 16% of our student body are minority students. Less than 1% of our professional educators are minorities. And the students themselves notice that, that we have less than 1% of our professionally certified employees are minorities. And for the 16% of the students who are minorities, I would like them to look and see that they're being taught by people who are like them once in a while. I think that's our value. And I think we're better enriched when we have a diverse group of people, diverse group of backgrounds, diverse group of perspectives. I think that just makes us a stronger organization. Existing in policies and really everybody's best efforts, right? Everyone, everyone has the right intention. But somehow it's just not enough. The other reason is the students themselves, like our own students, believe this work needs to be done. Despite our character programs, the anti-bullying programs we have, students still feel excluded. They feel different. They feel alone. Shouldn't tolerate that. Students still feel excluded. They feel different. They feel alone. Shouldn't tolerate that. You have a committee because this work is complex. I mean, we saw that, like, look what happened. Look at the kind of dialogue, toxic dialogue that happened on social media just over the terms diversity, inclusion and equity. Right? People put all kinds of stuff out there, right? All kinds of crazy stuff. That works complex. You need a committee. To help keep people, you know, stay calm and deliberate and loving in their approach to this work. Committee removes political influences, right? It's a barrier to people who have hidden agendas. And it ensures a balanced and a clear eyed approach. I talked last week to board a little bit about the difference of equality and equity. This is a. A graphic I've seen on the internet, many, many different places. Those schools in the past focused on equality. Right? Everybody gets the same thing. We are fair, right? Everybody gets the same thing. It was all about sameness. That was the approach. Now we'll recognize that it needs to be about fairness. Because we need to make sure that everybody has the same opportunity, right? And that may mean that you get something different so that you can have the same opportunity. It doesn't mean that you get the same thing and that it has to be equal. But unfortunately, the term equity and equality, it's become politically charged. It doesn't have to be. You know, the committee has to look at the reality that in schools across the nation. Achievement gaps are there, right? And for some students, they face barriers getting to the finish line that other students don't face. Now, the purpose is not to pull the barrier from one lane and put it in another lane to slow down a kid. The purpose is to work to remove barriers for all. So we know that poor children. Come to school having heard 30 million fewer words. We know that poor children come into kindergarten demonstrating less academic readiness. We know that special education kids in fourth grade have lower reading test scores. We know that black and African American eighth grade students have lower math test scores. We know that students who are bullied on the basis of gender identity. Or color or religion are less likely to graduate because they drop out. And we know that students with special needs who don't feel included. And have not been given opportunities to master skills are less likely to enroll college and finish. So those barriers should be removed. We have to do everything we can to remove those barriers if we're committed to all. So that's the thing. Are we committed to all students, right? All lives matter, then all people have to have barriers removed. So that they can succeed, so that there is a clear lane for every kid to the finish line. One of the students I talked to. I said, do you think we need a diversity committee? You know, why do you think we need a diverse committee? The question showed me why, but why not? Why don't we want to work to ensure all special needs students feel included and feel valued? Why don't we want to examine our curriculum to make sure it's inclusive and reflects the diverse society we live in? Why don't we want to work intentionally on providing opportunities for children who face economic hardships? Why wouldn't we want to make all of our Pendelco family members feel at home the minute they walk through our doors? Why wouldn't we want to give staff what they've asked for? Professional development on how to connect and reach kids who have different backgrounds from themselves. Why wouldn't we want to follow the example of kindergarten students who say, always be nice and be kind to others? So, you know, again. We're committed to acceptance, we're committed to respect, we're committed to equity and we are committed to support. I get, I was asked to give examples. I'll give examples again. I say, proceed with caution. Because in giving examples, it unfortunately may suggest. That the experience in Pendelco schools is different from the experience in the tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of other schools across the country. Fact is Catholic schools, private schools, public schools, all recognize there's a problem. And that's why so many have said, we need a diversity team. We need to hire a director of diversity. We need to have a supervisor of equity. We need to do this work, right? My own kids are in schools that do this work. So there was clearly a problem in those schools as well that had to be addressed. Here's some examples, right? Where's the evidence? So where's the evidence to justify this work? As an Asian, I was always expected to be super intelligent. It was as if it was my only identity, right? So the rest of this email talked of a child who felt like they were stereotyped the minute they walked into a classroom. It's hard for me to reconcile my fact that my son will never have a teacher who shares the same color of skin, has a similar background and knows what it's like to be a minority. In a majority white school. I actually had an adult at our school tell me things would be easier for me if I didn't tell my students that I was Jewish. That came from an employee. From an alumnus, I always seemed to be assigned to the classrooms where no one would ever consider that I would want to go to college. I was a special needs child. A parent and alumnus, I never remember seeing pictures or stories about people like me in school. It was eye opening for me when I went to college. A teacher wrote, the staff wholeheartedly believe diversity, equity and inclusion needs to be completed annually in our district. Asian American alumni breaks my heart. How can you feel accepted in school when you hear boys say ching, ching, dingaling as they pass you in the halls? Still too many kids think jokes about a person's race or religion are fair game. As a gay student, I experienced fear and hate speech, not pride. When I reported it, I was told kids didn't mean it. They meant it as a joke. They're being dumb. Gay is not synonymous with dumb. That's from an alumnus. An employee said, it's amazing to see how people can grow together when they're given the opportunities to look at the impact of their actions, embrace empathy. Teachers told me, what can you possibly say to a Jewish colleague who arrives at school to find a swastika carved into their desk? I had a physical disability. I learned to live with it and be successful. But I never should have had others mocking me by limping and calling me the R word. That's a kid who graduated, successful and has a job. I wanted to cry when I heard other kids call my friend from the Middle East a terrorist. No wonder she sat alone. Here's just another student. I stopped going to school for a while after hearing homophobic, homophobic slurs all the time. I tell people now, they shouldn't let anyone know that they're anything but straight. And that's not, that's just not right. Here's a teacher. Couldn't believe a high school student would say out loud, if we build the wall, who will cut our grass? And when I asked a student to fill in the blank, I said Pendelco needs to what? The student themselves said, improve the culture and discomfort around diversity. Look how wise that is because it's so true. Discomfort around diversity. And the student said, the world has changed. You know, you always get the best feedback from students, you know, it's like out of the mouths of babies, you hear the words you need to hear. So that's anecdotal evidence that was provided. Where's the evidence to justify the work? Well, as Mr. Armour alluded to, you know, economically disadvantaged students, you know. Our poor white students, they have an attendance rate 15% below state target and well below other groups. Only a third of that group participates in rigorous courses of study such as AP. Why should poor kids not participate in advanced placement classes? There's no, so we need to find out, why is that? Despite the guidance counselors and the teachers encouraging them to do it, there must be a reason. We got to open that door. Only 5% scored advanced on the math keystone. That should have been 18%. That's the state average. 84% of special needs students didn't pass the seventh grade math assessment. And that's a non track indicator for academic success, despite the extra help, despite the hard work by our teachers. 18% of the 12th graders in the, in the annual pay survey. Reported that when they were bullied, so if they were bullied, it was due to their sexual orientation. 18% of the people who felt bullied said it's due to their sexual orientation. So what would the committee do? Meet regularly, issue a report to the board. They analyze data and input, suggest efforts, recommend specialized professional development for staff. Offer objective judgment free assessments. They could serve in an advisory role. But they would not be empowered to select or purchase curriculum, to direct employee actions, to promote partisan agendas. Or to supersede any existing policies and standards. What might they actually do? So what are some examples, right? People reached out to me, sent me emails and said, what, what would this committee do? Why do you need it? I think a partner with human resources to increase diversity recruitment efforts. Examine achievement gaps in our data and form action plans. Recommend staff book study topics, speakers or other professional development opportunities so we can tap specialized expertise. Examine our procedures, ensure they're inclusive, assist with developing anti bullying programs and practices. If they can be improved, by all means, let's improve them. Conduct and analyze student staff, family survey data, propose. Purposeful initiatives that underscore culture of care, examine where inequities may exist, propose solutions, examine our curriculum. Is it diverse and inclusive? Principal went around his building and looked at the posters and image, you know, we have posters in our library that didn't reflect diversity at all. And I was glad he had that, that, that view. Said, wait a second, you know, let's make sure that we actually have curriculum resources that we have materials in our buildings that reflect the diversity in our society. Conduct building equity reviews, identify barriers. That are preventing our special needs students from being involved in any and all activities and programs. I think they can identify grant funding opportunities. So we can make sure that our economically disadvantaged students can access the entirety of our after school extracurricular programs. If some of them won't raise their hand and say, I'd like to do band, but I can't afford an instrument. I'd like to be on that team, but we don't have the money for the booster club. And they're embarrassed, right? So how can we make sure that we can bridge that communication gap to really help kids? We can identify ways people can feel more welcome. We can ensure our ready for life initiatives, prepare kids for college in diverse settings. Assist with ways to communicate to our English language learners. And encourage greater participation in extracurricular activities. Come to school, great kids, great students, but they're not in extracurriculars. What can we do to fix that? Examine the academic achievement growth of our gifted and talented students. Why does that plateau? Why do our best and brightest kids plateau in academic achievement growth? We should fix that. We should look at effective and supportive resources for students who, who want support and assistance with personal issues. They're the kind of things a committee could do. So I'm asking the board to recommit through their unanimous and previous support for diversity, inclusion and equity committee. But it is isolated from joining any regional membership groups that are conducting work in this space. And tonight, that agenda item is on the agenda for action. Interesting, Sun Valley grad, resident taxpayer, Pendelco employee. It'd be a great step in the right direction. Include contacts and diversity training, set up support groups at all levels for students who need help. You never know which students are teetering on the edge. A group like that not only impact change, but maybe save a life. So I move from that to other topics. Kindergarten registration, wonderful to start talking about next year, getting back to normalcy. Our online digital registration will open on March 22nd. We will be sending out information. Of course, we have some parents new to the district. Who will need to look for information on our website. That'll be prominently posted in all of our social media accounts and on our main webpage. And also on pdsd.org website, all the information that you'll need to be ready to complete online registration. Just like we did last year, we are not going to make parents come in early, sit and wait for an appointment. Several hours before the school day starts. I know, I remember seeing Mr. Tinsley waiting, I think it's at 5:30 AM to register his child. You want to do that, you'll be able to register your kids on your own time, online. And we will begin to let you know what documents that will need. Really excited to see what will be, I guess, the class, the Sun Valley class of, oh, something like. 2035 or something like that, 2034. Updating our comprehensive plan work. So tomorrow, we expect that we'll be sending a survey out to parents to ask for some feedback. So far, focus groups and the work with our staff and the data that we have looked at tells us so far, at least. There's those four priorities. So we have a clear and compelling need for targeted student supports and interventions. So we're saying that our district should commit to implementing targeted and intentional supports. To ensure that all students are making progress towards ready for life benchmarks. We want 100% of kids to be ready to read and respond to text by fourth grade. We want 100% of eighth graders to be algebra ready by eighth grade. We want 100% of our 12th graders to be ready for life. When they walk across that stage. We heard, we saw students who failed to meet proficiency benchmarks at critical foundational grades, they continue to perform poorly. So we want to commit to ensuring a consistent delivery of personalized, personalized instructional practices in all of our classrooms. Some of the stakeholder groups think that our outreach and collaboration isn't maximized yet. So we're going to commit to re-engaging in collaborative efforts with district stakeholder and community groups. We think that there's a lot of resources in our local business community that still can be tapped to the benefit of our students. So we'll commit to increasing those partnerships. And district stakeholder groups have so far told us that, you know, we need to go back and look at that coursework. Although it's standards aligned, we need to make sure that it's better geared towards developing college career and critical life success skills. So we really should commit to amplifying. You know, the course content objectives with 21st century skill development. What does that mean translated, right? That means that when a kid says, why is this important to me? Why do I need to learn this, Mrs. Apple? As she can explain exactly how it's tied in to ready for life skills that will make them ready for life after 12th grade. I mentioned earlier that I'm very excited that we got news from Chester County Health Department that we can begin to bring students back. We are putting that process in place since the start of schooling, since COVID. We've based all of our health and safety decisions on guidance from the Chester County Health Department, right? So there's all kinds of advocacy groups out there that offer all kinds of guidance documents. Sometimes they conflict. What we have done from the very get go is so we're going to follow the guidance from one organization and that's our supervising health department, Chester County Health Department. They gave guidance in the past that we followed. That said, there should be physical distancing of no less than six feet. So that forced us to put kids into two different cohorts. That's changed based on science, based on their knowledge and based on the experience since last June. It now permits us to merge our cohorts. To provide four days of in-person instruction, which will be double the current amount. So really, you know, we know virtual learning is hard, particularly for our youngest students. We got to act promptly, but we got to act safely. So we're pleased to pursue a phased merge cohorts that we are permitted to do. It's grounded and supported by evidence based research and more current public health practices. You know, really, it's not that far away. Many districts in the Bucks County. Region that follow guidance from the Bucks County Health Department have followed from the beginning. An experience of opening buildings with just three feet of separation. And what they found is that when students are masked and are three feet apart. And you put in place all the other mitigation efforts, there's no, no discernible difference in the number of kids. Who are acquiring the virus. In fact, just like us. Any kids that are getting it up there, they're not getting it in schools. They're getting it outside of school or they're getting it from family members. So that is really important. It gives us confidence in recognizing that the guidance that has changed in the health department. Can be believed, right? Because we see it for ourselves, you know, districts that have followed that guidance have been able to have their kids in school. And our kids deserve it too. Again, what's changed? Health department's permitting a revised level of physical distancing. It supports a distance of no less than three feet, but up to six feet where feasible. When county conditions meet certain benchmarks over a three week period of time. And that's an important part. That's why we can't start this tomorrow. We've already done this with kindergarten. We've merged our cohorts. Now our teachers have been wonderful with this change. It was a dramatic change. Hats off to them because they stepped up, they supported kids. And we were able to bring them in and still meet the six feet of social distancing. So our goal is going to continue to be six feet. We may have classrooms where we'll meet that marker, nothing will change. But we could never make that guarantee. Now it might be five feet, not six. But what we know is six feet isn't magical. And five and a half feet is suddenly dangerous. That, that's not what the data tells us. So tonight, the updated health and safety plan that will reflect the changes in the guidance are being given to the board for approval. What's the data look like? I mean, take a look at the county. Just in the last four weeks with week one being the most current. Dramatic change, right? Dramatic change, as you can see, right? And I think we're even down to closer to like 109. So that whole trend has moved right in the direction that we wanted. But look at Pendelco, you know, I was really pleased to see this. This is not our school district. This is our entire geographic boundary. Positive test count a month ago, 54 to 43 to 37 to 35. It just keeps going down and down and down. And that matches what we're seeing in our schools, right? Number of people who are quarantined is kind of dried up to a trickle. Here's the dashboard that we post on our website for people who are interested. Look at the number of known active cases, right? A lot of zeros up there. Look at the number of people in quarantine. Look at the number of people in quarantine, right? Down to single digits. So, I mean, thank goodness, you know, knock on wood, we're heading in the right direction. What's the timeline? School board approves an updated health and safety plan. The, uh, within this week, um, the FAQ material pack, right? We'll send out a digital packet of information that'll include all the updates to the hybrid schedule. That'll answer a lot of questions that parents might have. That'll, uh, point to the data that shows that this is safe. I mean, look, if it wasn't safe, we wouldn't do it. If it wasn't safe, we wouldn't make this change, just that simple. Uh, we will ask parents to affirm their interest and commit to four days of in-person instruction for their students. Uh, there will be an election form essentially. Basically just affirm so that our principals have accurate and updated information that they can give to the staff. And we're going to say, look, your child's been in for two days. I'm sure you're thrilled to get him out of the house and get him in for four days. But are you going to be doing that? Like it can't be willy-nilly back and forth. You know, I don't want to go to school today, I'm going to stay home. That's, that's not fair to our teachers and it's hard for us to track students. Tentatively, tentatively, because we have to wait on that data, of course. Elementary, grade six and grade nine could begin four days of in-person instruction on the week of March twenty-second. Then after that, we have this little thing called spring break in the way. So it makes sense to have the other current hybrid students then come back to four days of in-person instruction at the end of spring break. The instructional models, um, won't change much. Uh, the elementary full-time cyber students, students have never come in our school who have not been live syncing into classrooms, but instead have their own cyber teacher. They're going to be able to remain in that program with their cyber teacher. We're not going to take the rug out from underneath them on that. But some parents have indicated they'd like to send their kids back. So they're welcome to return in-person instruction as well. Secondary students who have been participating in asynchronous instruction, they can continue to do that. But we will inform parents in the packet of information that that level of teacher virtual supports could be less. You know, parents will have to understand that teachers now have more students in front of them, not on the other side of the screen. So to, you know, if we have two kids on the other side of the screen and teacher has twenty students in front of them, uh, teacher can't be doing the kind of small group instruction and breakout groups on a Zoom that they've done in the past. So that may look different. The district's continued, required to continue to offer academic and virtual support if you're in quarantine. Parents have asked about that, what if my child's in quarantine, what happens? We'll continue to do what we need to do to make sure that your child isn't falling behind and not accessing instruction. And the level of live synchronous support for, we have a few, we have just a few elementary students who are in a kind of an all virtual format syncing into classes. You know, that will be dependent upon the final enrollment data after parents elect the four-day options for students. And again, we'll answer all this in the information packet that will be sent out to parents. But as an example, if you're a third grade teacher and you have sixteen kids in, in front of you and you have one child, uh, who has been live streaming in, that's an onerous ask for a teacher to sit at their desk and work with the one child uh, who has been live streaming in, potentially at the expense of the class that's sitting in front of them, right? But we also know that, look, we're a service industry, we're going to work individually with teachers, with parents. We're going to work to support our teachers. It just may mean that that level of live synchronous support, you know, might not be the same as it has been in the past. In the past, the teachers had half of their class home. Now they're going to be back. So we have to, you know, we have to be, you know, fair to the circumstances that have changed while we still support, you know, the few people that want that. We know, we're not, leave no child behind, we're not going to leave any child behind. Uh, you know, I closed my presentation, I appreciate your patience. Um, we started this meeting, uh, tonight as we do. And with a pledge that, you know, the kids say every day, that pledge ends with one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And those are words that are synonymous with a commitment to equity, with a commitment to inclusion and a commitment to the value of diversity. Because in the end, it is all driven to the same thing. It's driven to bring us together as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And that is essentially at the heart of what we are attempting to do with that committee, nothing more. Um, with that, I'll turn it back to our board president. Thank you, Mr. Armour.
Thank you, Dr. Steinhoff. Announcements for the public. Tonight, in accordance with Act Forty-eight, Sunshine Law, the board met in its executive session to discuss personnel and litigation matters. Comments by members of the board?
I'll start. I did have, um, on a, you know, Dr. Steinhoff, I did have three, three kids in here and one already graduated high schools since your presentation ended. Um, but in ser- in all seriousness, it was, uh, it was very, uh, very thoughtful and it was a lot to cover, quite frankly. Um, but on, on a serious note, uh, when you were talking about if Miss Phil- Miss Phillips and I think it was me and Mr. Blair were the ones who were there prior to six AM. So it's not fair for all the ones who were in pre-K, that everything's, uh, digital with, uh, with this merry and all. Um, sorry, Mr. Peters, you're so far down on the bucket list. Next time is going to have to be, uh, Mr. Maine, I would assume you're already an hour into meeting, so apologies. Um, Mr. Armour, thank you. I, uh, quite frankly, for your opening statements, I couldn't say it, couldn't say it any better. So for me, me as a board member, I appreciate it. Um, Dr. Steinhoff, a- and I, and seriously, um, all your comments, everything. I, you know, I've known you, and you can tell from my, my voice now, I've known you personally. We've, we've worked together for, uh, more than twelve years. And I know, as well as many, maybe of the three hundred plus, uh, who are in attendance can tell in your voice the sincerity that you are everything that you spoke of, whether it was the children coming back to school or, or the other agenda items. So I want to appreciate you for that, but all sincerity. And you can honestly tell how, because I know you personally, I know you're, you know, I know how you act, how much you care for all our employees and everyone, uh, within our district. So within, for both of you guys, I just need to, I, it's important for me to state to you, both of you in a public setting. Um, I want to thank you both for, for your leadership. Um, and then for me personally, it's just one sentence is, I, Kevin Tinsley, I respect and support all our administration who's on the panelist, as well as all our faculty, staff, uh, that I live and all the children that go to school. Uh, I have not always voted, that particular example for Dr. Steinhoff, I voted on that. There are items on the agenda. Respectfully, I did not agree with Dr. Steinhoff or what Mr. Kameka or anyone else, right, for that matter, uh, brought and I uh, voted it down. But I've always respected their point of view and I would, and I understood where they were coming from. Um, in my opinion, I brought this up privately to Mr. Kameka and I'm going to say pri- uh, publicly with all, with a lot more staff on this call. Despite Lisa Billner District and how our team, I mean, I loved how our district employees started presenting topics last, last week alone. And have all the wonderful things that are still happening, even in a, a, a hybrid or, or virtual setting. Um, finally, you would think that I told the kids that they're going to, uh, Disney World on March twenty twenty-second. I told them that actually the school board actually has technically have to vote for it, so. Um, but at the same time, they were all excited, you would think they were just as excited as that, as that on the agenda are ten point one three, I believe is, is still the agenda item. Um, for reopening schools, safety, health, health and safety plan. Um, so I'm just excited. I know other board members, I think we're all excited for this to, actually, uh, Friday, March thirteenth was, was that, uh, was that call that we received from Blackerstein Office since then? But that's twenty twenty and that's it. Thank you, uh, Mr. Armour.
Thank you, Mr. Tinsley. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Armour, I got, uh, one thing to add as well. So uh, to build on what Mr. Tinsley had said on, uh, you know, as a board, we don't always agree with each other. We, you know, just because you vote yes on something, I vote no, it doesn't mean you're right and I'm wrong. I mean, there, we, what I've learned in my time, you know, not as tenured as, as most of the board members, but you know, healthy debate, you know, I don't have to agree with what you say, but I should respect it and I should appreciate it. And I learned to do that and, you know, I think we do that, uh, you know, a lot. And I feel that, you know, as, uh, you, you know, folks are on this meeting here because they care about their children and, uh, you know, it's, it, it's important to appreciate and respect both sides of the story and I'm, and I want to thank you, Mr. Armour, uh, you know, you are even a bigger proponent than me at getting these kids back to school. I can say teenage boys, uh, do not excel in the cyber model. Uh, from talking to parents in the district. Even though the heroic efforts by our teachers who are doing ten times the work that they did this time last year. So thank you all. Uh, you know, I hope we can get back to normalcy very soon. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Seesaw. Anyone else before we move on?
Mr. Armour, at the risk of, uh, breaking the mic because I've spoken so much tonight, I, I did see a comment, um, about the reopening plan that, um, probably we could, I could have mentioned, I should have mentioned, which was a question really about, uh, four days, this is five days a week. And I, I should clarify that, uh, really, but have, some of the districts throughout the community, throughout the region were split on this issue. Uh, about half have believed that there's value in keeping the asynchronous flex day. You know, that we, we have as our Wednesday, our Wednesday synchronous day. Uh, for reasons of ensuring that we continue to have the gym cleaning, for reasons of ensuring that we can continue to accommodate some of the, uh, virtual groups that students have with teachers in the, in the, uh, PM session. Some of the extracurricular groups that are being run virtually in that Wednesday section as well. But the main issue for us is that Wednesday has kept us from having to close our schools for a long period of time if there happens to be a regional COVID spike. That's really saved the day. We've had some circumstances where schools, uh, uh, were told that they hit that COVID spike many months ago. That Wednesday allowed us to send a rapid clean team in to work with Chester County Health Department to get assurances that we could reopen. And we wouldn't have that if we remove it. So, you know, there, there's a lot of advantages to keeping the Wednesday schedule in place. I understand that parents put their kids in, why, you know, squander a day. We evaluated that, I believe, you know, for the nine or ten Wednesdays that we would be talking about, the advantages outweigh the benefits. That's why, you know, we are, uh, like one of, some of the other districts as well that have said, let's stick with four. We're doubling the amount of instruction. It'll help also with, uh, student wellness to have that PM break to do some fun things and get caught up. I just want to address that and with that, I'll zip it and turn it back to you, Mr. Armour.
Thank you, Doc Steinoff. All right, uh, we will move on to, uh, number seven, items for board information. Uh, it's an update on the Sun Valley High School renovation project. I'm going to turn this over to Chris Peters of MM Architects.
Thank you very much. Appreciate, uh, being able to present tonight. Yeah, Christopher Peters with Meron Amadei Architects. Can I share my screen?
I, uh, I just turned into a co-host. Yes, Mr. Peters.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Can you see that?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
We just wanted to give a, a brief update to, uh, the project at Sun Valley High School and, and really the projects. Um, as you know, in previous projects, we've completed renovation in the B and C wings. We've, um, completed restroom renovations, uh, through most of the school. We completed a kitchen cafeteria renovation and we just completed the nurse's addition, uh, new entry vestibule and canopy. So the project that we have right now, um, that we're completing, in fact, we're going to put it, uh, out to bid, uh, in the next month. Uh, will, uh, involve the rest of the, the building. So some minor finish replacement in the D wing. Uh, gymnasium, some gymnasium equipment upgrades. Uh, a, a major renovation to the locker team room areas. Um, some adjustments to the weight room and the wrestling room. Uh, moving left, plan left, um, some renovation to the auditorium, uh, including new seats, uh, finishes, uh, some adjustments to the stage. Uh, behind that, an expansion actually of the band and choral area, including some more support spaces for that area, uh, including some larger classrooms. And then last but not least, the renovation to most of the classrooms in the A wing, which include, uh, autism support, life skills, um, a STEM computer lab, the art classrooms and the FCS lab. So that is all incorporated in this upcoming project that's going out to bid. Uh, at the same time, um, we, actually previously, we've already bid a window replacement project. So if you've seen the school, we have some new aluminum windows, anodized aluminum windows. Um, in the nurse's addition specifically, you might have noticed that we're replacing all the, the windows in the school that has been bid and contracted. Um, they are in the process of working, uh, getting the shop drawings, getting all those materials ordered so we can replace the windows during the summer, including with that would be a facade repair, cleaning, patching, uh, including both the, the EFS that's on the outside and some, uh, brick improvements or cleaning. Uh, so that would actually commence and end, uh, the summer. So, um, not only will this renovation, this larger renovation project start, uh, in a small way in the summer, we will have that window replacement facade repair, uh, starting in the summer. They will be coordinated so they're not at the same spot. The windows will be able to be taken out and replaced and systematically go throughout the perimeter of the school, uh, through June, July and August. And the third piece for the summer is the potential for repaving, patching and repaving, uh, the front entry loop and the entry drive and parking. And again, that would be coordinated, uh, with the other projects. So they can do that and not be in the way of window replacement or let's say the renovation in the D wing. So those are the main pieces that are, will we, you'll start seeing some of that, uh, in the summer. Uh, materials are being ordered at this point for some of it and we're close to being bidding or bidding the larger project. Uh, that's a quick explanation of, uh, this project and where we're going. And I guess if there are any questions, uh, be willing to answer that.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Peters. Um, I know it was precious to sit and waited on us for, uh, a little bit over an hour.
No problem.
But I, I will say that, that we are still moving forward with the renovation of our auditorium and the rest of the school. Right now it's been put on, I don't want to say back burner, but it's put on hold. Uh, there's a problem with getting supplies in some of the areas that we would need. So the project is still in motion, but we've changed gears on what phases are getting done at what time. That'd be correct there. Mr. Peters?
Yeah, this, this project here, uh, when, all of this will be in this, uh, project and we will be phasing it uh, for minimal disruption to the school. So, uh, they can make sure that everything's accommodated for the sports programs and and whatever needs to occur, uh, in the gymnasium and auditorium. So we won't renovate the gym and the auditorium at the same time. So one of those larger spaces is available. So we're looking at the specific phasing. That's why this drawing has a few colors on it. Um, and I failed to mention that this project would start this summer, uh, probably in the D wing and then end the following summer with the completion of the A wing. So all, this whole renovation would be complete by the fall of twenty twenty-two.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for Mr. Peters? Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it, Mr. Peters.
Thank you.
You're welcome to join us for the rest of the meeting, but I'm sure, uh, you have other stuff to do.
All right. Thank you very much.
Christopher, thank you. We'll see you at our next Monday meeting. Appreciate it.
Okay, no problem.
All right. Number eight, items for board discussion, uh, see as none. Dr. Steinhoff, before we get into public comment section of, uh, today's meeting, uh, I would like to call, um, Ms. Armbruster to the mic here, um, said she has something to share with us.
And as we, uh, look to do that, as I bring her into the panel to, uh, uh, speak to the board, I would, I will note for those who are in attendance, uh, Mrs. Armbruster is the president of the Pendelco Education Association, a longtime teacher at Northland Middle School. Uh, likely speaking on behalf of the association, but I will bring her, uh, in one moment. And we can hear you now, Ms. Armbruster. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Steinoff, and thank you, Mr. Armour, for this opportunity. Members of the board, I ask that you vote to approve this committee. The purpose of this diversity, equity and inclusion steering committee, as stated by Dr. Steinhoff, is to develop a charter, mission, responsibilities, duties and obligations to assist underperforming subgroups in our community. In June, Ms. Armour stated, I look forward to moving into the future as one community and making positive changes that benefit everyone. We encourage members of the board to support this steering committee to review current educational practices and policies and help explore potential recommendations to address achievement gaps for various subgroups. As educators, we recognize that in order for students to be ready to learn, they must have a sense of belonging. Teachers and students are asking for help and understanding in working with all students to feel safe and accepted in the classroom. Our families have had many great students go through Pendelco who have learned what it means to be good citizens and who exhibit great character traits. But our goal is to reach all students and we should continue to strive to do so. We've heard anecdotal stories from students and parents regarding, regarding the lack of inclusive climate felt by some. How many students have we not heard from? How many voices are too uncomfortable to speak up? This is a complex topic that includes an investment from all stakeholders, parents, students, staff and board members. We appreciate your support in working together to help all students achieve, succeed and excel. And we're every student is Pendelco proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Armbruster. Number nine on the agenda is our section for comments by members of the public. This public participation is for agenda items only. Please limit your comments to three minutes as we only have 15 minutes on the agenda for this. Please use the raise hand option. The presiding officer may interrupt or terminate a participant's statement when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene or irrelevant. Doc Steinoff, we are going to start the public comment section.
Okay, first name that I see is Sufi. And I'll, actually I'll turn it over to Mr. Zebly and as he introduces speakers, he can inform me when I can bring them into the panel.
Sufi, please state your name and address for the, for the board. And the agenda item you're speaking about.
Thank you. My name is Sufi Schaefer residing at 2350 Clearview Lane in Aston. And I had prepared some remarks to support the diversity, excuse me, I'm going to call it the cares committee resolution on the agenda for this evening, but I will actually shorten it because I appreciate the comments and the reiteration of Dr. Sternhouse's really compelling presentation from last week. But I did want to bring a few points, a few points up. It is this board's code of conduct which dictates the public expects that our first and greatest priority is to provide equitable educational opportunities for all youth. Dr. Steinhoff, in last week's study session and again tonight, shared specific facts of the persistent achievement gaps between certain sub demographic groups. The board, this board's code of conduct also states that personal decisions of board members should be based on all sufficient facts. The board's governing policy dictates that all data appropriate, appropriate, use all data appropriately to make informed decisions and monitor results assessing student growth and achievement, which includes the board's commitment to publishing an annual district report card that includes aggregate data on student achievement as well as disaggregate data reflecting race, ethnicity, sex, disability, migrant status, English proficiency and status as economically disadvantaged. The board's policy also commits to the district report card, including a comparison of these disaggregate groups regarding achievement levels. And surely you have noted additional data points on your reports where achievement gaps persist. And these persist despite the best efforts of our teachers, despite the best efforts of administrators and despite the best efforts of our board. This resolution is aligned with the board's code of conduct to provide equitable educational opportunities for all youth as well as the district's overall overarching mission, which is the first line of this resolution. It's directly in line with the missions, the mission of the district and the policies of the board to review these facts upon recognition of any issue to take action. And the action recommended by the superintendent is this resolution. There are many public school districts around the country that are exposed to legal liability based on documented achievement gaps where no changes were implemented to provide equitable educational opportunities. The board guidelines also state that the board and administration shall give substantial weight to the input received from the community. Many stakeholders have shared their support for this resolution directly with the superintendent and the board. And widespread community support is demonstrated in the hundreds of signatures from Pendelco community members on the letter supporting this resolution. Lastly, I wanted to point out what has already been mentioned by Mr. Armour and, and Dr. Steinhoff that the petition circulated by a lower Marion organization in opposition to this resolution bases that opposition in part on changes to the curriculum. There are no changes to the curriculum in this resolution. And if that's a concern, I wanted to remind the board that no curriculum can be changed or adopted without the board's approval. I thank you very much for your time and I thank, I thank Mr. Armour and Dr. Steinhoff for clarifying exactly what is in this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sufi. Next up, we have Megan Killian.
Ms. Killian has been, been transmitted into panel. And she can unmute her mic, state her name and address.
Hi, Megan Killian, 328 Corgerville Road in Aston. Thank you for having me on here. I just have a quick question for the children who have IEPs. Dr. Steinhoff, what is your plan with reopening in regards to children that have IEPs? Specifically, my daughter in fourth grade that had.
If I could stop you there, Ms. Killian, for a minute. This, this portion is not a question and answers. If you have a specific question that you need answered, please contact Dr. Steinhoff or Mr. Comiker.
Okay, well, that's, okay, that's great. But he just did a presentation on reopening and I have a question. So why can't you be?
You can, this is, it's a public comment section.
Yeah.
For comments only, not as, it is not a questions and answers session.
So there's no transparency. I can't ask a question on this, on the slide show that he just presented about the reopening of Pendelco school districts?
Now, Ms. Killian, I, what I would reiterate with Mr. Armour is indicating that, you know, this is a matter of our process. This is an opportunity for public comment so that we can hear from people on a broader issue. But I'd like to do is please, I, I will make sure that our specialized director or our assistant superintendent reaches out to you tomorrow and will answer the questions about how the proposed changes may impact your child. And we'll make sure that we reach out to you and get those individual specific questions answered for you. We're happy to do so. Thank you.
Mr. Armour, the next individual with their hand raised is Beth McClure.
Love how they shut people out, right?
I'm sorry, Mr. Zebly, who's next?
Melissa. No, we had a, somebody that was there that I think they dropped off.
Next up now is Melissa Lavery.
Okay.
Please state your name, address and agenda item you're speaking about. Go ahead, Ms. Lavery.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Ms. Lavery.
Yes, thank you. My name is Melissa Lavery. I live at 101 Greenbrier Place in Aston. I would like to speak about agenda item 10.14. Mr. Armour and Dr. Steinhoff, thank you for your words at the beginning of this meeting. It is clear that we all need to have an open and healthy dialogue with each other, even if it is uncomfortable. And I appreciate your statements. As you know, the PDSD code of conduct states that we as members of our local school board of education, representing all the residents of our school district, believe that the public expects that our first and greatest priority is to provide equitable educational opportunities for all youth. It also emphasizes the importance of engaging with all stakeholders and staying current with the changing needs in education. It also states that to promote student growth and achievement and effective school board models, responsible governance and leadership by adopting and acting in accordance with the Pennsylvania School Board Association's code of conduct for members of Pennsylvania school boards. One of the core tenants of the PSBA is to advance the conversation surrounding equity in public education as an economic and moral imperative to prepare children for the 21st century. And so students may actively participate in our democracy and to respect, value and include diverse peoples. Their third core legislative principle is the support for increased equity and accountability, which includes accountability and performance standards that raise student achievement and close achievement gaps, which is mandated through federal and state law. The achievement gap pertains to major differences in academic indicators such as test scores and graduation rates among various subgroups, which include race, ethnicity, gender, English proficiency and abilities. According to Dr. Steinhoff's presentation, the achievement gap and hurtful experiences of students in PDSD is not acceptable. The PSBA states that in the pursuit of equity, school leaders must assess our own actions locally to overcome institutional barriers and create opportunities so that each and every child has the tools and supports necessary to achieve his or her highest potential. And they should also be able to demonstrate how their programs meet the needs of all their students. Equality means that all students receive the same instruction and tools regardless of their needs. Equity means that all students are given opportunities based on their unique needs. Not everyone in our district has the same life experience and it is apparent that not everyone in this district respects these differences. It is noticeable that bias intention exists. How can we expect children to perform academically if we can't even respect their lived experience? Diversity is what makes a democracy work and inclusion is an essential aspect of a child's developing identity as they coexist with others in society. If teachers and students say they need to learn to better relate to one another, we must believe them and act accordingly. I have also submitted a letter to each member of the board and Dr. Steinhoff as well, which now includes 368 signatures from stakeholders. I have submitted the update to be placed on the record for this meeting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lavery. Dr. Steinhoff, we did have Beth McClure was at the top of the list there. Somehow she got disconnected. If we could let her in for public comment next.
Absolutely. One second. Ms. McClure should be on in just a moment.
Ms. McClure, please state your name and address and agenda item you're speaking about.
Sure. My name's Beth McClure. I live at 701 Lamp Post Lane. Um, I had, I just have a few comments and I think all of them are related to the diversity, equity and inclusion topic. First of all, I would like to say that I think that should be open to more people than just people on the board. I know, Dr. Steinhoff, I just emailed you this evening saying that I would love to be a part of the committee. It's actually a, a number one focus for myself at work. And not that I would goodness share like my proprietary work with the school, but I have a lot of insight and a lot of information. But I think it would be very helpful and I would love to share with the school. Second of all, or second and third of all, um, I know that there was a conversation about special needs kids. And my son particularly is a special needs kid. And I know one of the major roadblocks is that it took four years for him to get an appropriate either 405, 504, I'm sorry, or an IEP, which he was denied the IEP, which is fine, but it took four years to get a 504. And I know other parents that are still struggling and it's been a couple of years for them as well. So I think that process needs to be reevaluated, especially when it comes into, when they go into the higher grades. And they continue to struggle. So I think it's just a process or a reevaluation of how that process works with the, with the school district and however it works. Also, I do, I would prefer that when, because my child is now going through the Apex program. I would really appreciate that, like, it's included in these programs, it, that it's included in these new processes, it are new procedures on how things are going to happen. And I know that it was mentioned for full virtual or full cyber elementary kids. My child is in elementary and I just want clarity to make sure that it is full. Like at all, all levels of school, like it's middle school, it's high school. And the tutoring program that one of the student representatives made. I did ask a question in the chat and the answer was that it was for high school right now. Are those programs available for students besides teacher tutoring? Are there programs like that available? Can high school students help elementary and middle school students? So those are my comments and questions and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McClure. Doc Steinoff, just to, for a quick update, Mr. Tinsley did text me, he lost power at his house. It's back. He should be signing on. There he is. I see him in the, with his hand raised at the bottom.
Yep.
And that'd be great.
Happy to bring him in.
Next would be Tori Albanese.
Please state your name, address and agenda item you're speaking about for the board.
Uh, my name's Victoria Albanese. I live at 41 Van Ude Drive in Aston. And I'd like to make some comments on the committee issue. I am a graduate from Sun Valley and anyone who taught me or knows me at all knows that I am not afraid to really speak on issues I really believe in. But even then, I, as a student at Sun Valley, I run into issues with being heard. It was almost like kind of screaming into the void when it came to speaking about these issues. So I'm thankful that I can talk about them and represent some student ideas. I think some issues that should be addressed to keep the committee beneficial for the district as a whole should be the responsibility that not only the board members, but the teachers as well should take responsibility for things that not only they say or stuff that they also put out on any type of social media. I think it's important that that is talked about more because students do see this and they do learn from things that these teachers put out because they are role models. I think that these types of issues should be brought up more. Because even if it is a opinion, it's still something that students will find out and they will learn for it. And it kind of creates that ability for students to use the same type of language towards other students, especially when it comes to minority groups. So I think that it should be brought up more for the board to talk about the things that they not only say in meetings, but to students in general. And I overall think that that would be doing a service for students. It is to be a better role model and to keep that discussion open to everybody. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So I will say that we are going to use our half hour for public comments now. The end public comments section will be limited to 15 minutes. I do see that we have some people with their, their hand raised. They want to make their point. So we, we'll do the additional 15 minutes now and cut the, the final short by 15 minutes. So Pete Papa George is next.
Please state your name and address for the board.
I'm Pete Pop George. I live at 43 Van Ude Drive in Aston. I'm an alum of Pendelco and a teacher currently in the district. And let me start by saying thank you, Mr. Armour, for agreeing to vote in favor of the CARES committee. This past year has been nothing but tough. And as educators, we found ways to rise to each and every challenge. We've comforted our students through a global pandemic. We brought them normalcy that had been lacking since last March. We calm their worries that this world is scary, that things are happening outside of their control. And we did it all because we love what we do and we want the children in our buildings to continue to feel a sense of security within the confines of our community. Over the past four years, I've worked at Pendelco. I've had students come out to me as a part of the LGBTQ plus community. I've had students discuss mental health struggles. I've had students confront their fears of being black or brown and all have expressed concern of not seeing themselves represented in curricular materials, in the testing and in the community. As teachers, we hear our students. We reflect on the materials used. We adjust the books we read, the tests we use, the content we have to not only be mirrors reflective of our students, but windows for them to see the world outside of this community. This work is never easy, but we know it is necessary. This Pendelco School District CARE Steering Committee is not meant to instill any beliefs in our students, but rather to learn from them and to learn from our differences, to analyze and to reflect and to make sure our community is there for all students. I want to encourage the board to sign on in support. I want to encourage the board to participate. And I want to invite you all to learn alongside of us, the staff, so we can best reach each and every one of our students. I also want to thank you all for all you do and all that you continue to do for our students. It doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Papa George. Dr. Steinoff, next we have Amanda Scott.
Yes, Mr. Armour, she'll come over in just one moment.
Ms. Scott, please state your name and address for the board.
Hi, Amanda Scott, four thirteen High Grove Lane in Aston. And I'm speaking to the return to school agenda topic. As a mother of three Pendelco School District students and a career public health professional, personally involved in local hospital response to this pandemic, I'm thrilled that our students may be able to safely return to their classrooms this spring. However, I want to point out that this is primarily due to our statewide mask mandate, effective contact tracing, and the diligent work of our superintendent, principals, teachers, and school staff. I would encourage specific focus be made on lunch break as this is one of the documented activities with the greatest risk of transmission, which is being unmasked and eating. I'd also like to point out that in publicly accessible social media postings, the school board member continues to promote anti-masking and pandemic pokes opinions. This is not in the best interest of our children nor our community. And as elected officials, I'm appalled that this type of behavior continues to be tolerated in our district. Our board needs to respect and support evidence-based science instead of promoting conspiracy theory. Thank you for your time, and thank you, Dr. Steinoff.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Mr. Armour, the next individual with their hand raised is Dychala, D Y C H A L A. Please state your name and address for the board.
Uh, yes, my name is Joseph Dychala. I reside at one one zero Donnelly Avenue, Donnelly, like the phone book. I have a couple of comments I'd like to make regarding the D E I proposal. Unfortunately, I was late to the meeting. I didn't get to see the entire presentation. I have previously emailed Dr. Steinhoff and the board members regarding my concerns about this committee. And I'd like to very quickly share with you a story of two students. I grew up in the city of Chester. I've lived in Delaware County all my life. I moved to Aston Township in nineteen eighty-five. I've been a resident ever since. I've been involved in the school district as a student. And also, I'm a private music instructor, and I interact with young people on a daily basis. A lot of what I'm hearing, I'm not saying isn't true or is true. I just don't see these extreme examples. And again, I'm not in the school district to be able to verify this or not. But when I was growing up, I was blessed to be able to attend private school for nine years. And I'll give you a tale of two students. We'll talk to Equity for just a moment. When I was in fifth grade, I was reading at a ninth grade level. Not all the kids were. When I was in eighth grade, we had a student who was sixteen years old. In the last week of school, actually drove the school because he was sixteen and licensed. That school, those teachers never gave up on any one of the students there, whether it was someone who had exhibited high intelligence and so forth, such as myself. And I'm not bragging. I'm just stating facts. Now, had we made everything equitable and fair, everybody would have been learning from the same curriculum in a small, same setting classroom. Those who were more advanced would have had to sort of pull back, and those who were less advanced would have had to sort of catch up more. Speaking to the gentleman who now owns his own business, you know, absolutely fantastic, was never a good student, but absolutely amazing business person. I think that equity and fairness is, is sort of a double edged sword. I learned directly about American history from my two parish priests. One was a paratrooper who jumped at Normandy and actually said mass for the troops. And the other parish priest was someone who survived the concentration camps. Now, I only bring that up into the topic because earlier in the meeting, one part that I did manage to catch was it was stressed that part of what we're talking about here is not Marxism. That concerns me from the standpoint of if we have to describe something as not Marxism, I find that a bit peculiar. Marxism is a form of a philosophy and a form of governing where everyone has tried to be made equal. I think the one quote was to each according to his abilities and to each according to his needs. Now, kids are going to be kids. I understand that. And at the same time, you can't regulate people's behavior. If you have bad kids or if you have bad parents at home who aren't teaching their kids right from wrong, that's not an issue the school board or the teachers can solve. I grew up in Chester, and I had neighbors of all colors, creeds, faiths, et cetera. Catholics, Protestants, Presbyterians, black folks, white folks, Asian folks, you name it. And I never, never in my life experienced and saw color or any of that stuff until I was taught that and told that. If we continue, in my opinion, to keep on talking about the differences that actually make us unique and make us individuals rather than focusing on, and this was part of my letter to the school board, the fact that we are, one, all human beings, and, two, we are all Americans. We need to live up to the standards of our founding, which set the course for us to be a more prosperous, more free, and a more equal nation. And we also need to heed Dr. Martin Luther King's words, that we should not be evaluated on our, our color of our skin, but on the content of our character. I believe opportunity exists in Pendelco School District for all students because I was a student who attended Pendelco School for four years. I appreciate the board's time, and I thank you for having this meeting, and I thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, the next individual is Sarah Kerpel. Please state your name and address for the board.
This is Sarah Kerpel. I am at forty-five thirty-one Aston Mills Road. I want to open up with a couple of quick comments. Number one, I want to thank the sincere comments from Mr. Armour and the demonstration of growth from my perspective from June. So, Mr. Armour, thank you so much for your comments at the beginning and the commitment for diversity, equity, and inclusion. Or as we, we're going to call it CARES, which is, it will be the same. Dr. Steinhoff, thank you as well for lifting up some points. I'd like to start off by Martin Luther King's other famous letter, Letters from a Birmingham Jail, jail, which warns us about the white moderate. If we do not address this and take action right now, if we turn the other cheek, if we don't see color, we are going to set our children up for failure. This has already been lifted up, so I don't think I need to drag this on too much. But there has been several, three, I think, public social media posts by a board member this week. I would like to stand with our teachers. Teachers are not perfect. They are also going through a global pandemic. They have created content for our students with care that is centered around students, their needs, and their desire to learn about themselves from a perspective of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Teachers, I stand with you. I am proud of you. I'm a mother of a fifth grade student. Thank you. I want to move on to, to comment on Dr. Steinhoff's. And again, this is about ten point one four, the resolution. The two particular components that we saw this week circulating on social media, number one, Bill Lawrence Online, where the last speaker was an author, as well as the No Left Turn website. Both of the hosts of those websites are from out of town individuals, one from Springfield and one from Montgomery County. I think it is egregious that a board member would align with someone who kind of shapes their ideas off of this racist ideology, that they would seek outside people to try to undermine the progress of our school board and the success of our students. No board member should go outside for help unless it is to learn in a positive way about something. And this is taking some steps back. It caused confusion and hatred and, and all of the things that we've seen in the past couple of years, several years, about the vitriol and hate surrounding diversity. I want to understand why it is that we would want to cozy up with these alt-right extremists. Why does certain board members not trust our calls to action? Students, parents, residents, alumni, they're all calling for this change. It is absolutely, I, I just don't understand how these surveys claim that there is no resident, no evidence when there is evidence. Why are constituents' calls to action being ignored? And why now? Why, when we're trying to reopen our schools to get back to some kind of a normal? Are we trying to confuse the electorate? Are we trying to scare people that diversity and equity are bad things? This is not a knee jerk reaction. This is not political. Some people are infuriated that this is going to be considered at this point, and they don't even know what to say. Well, I am infuriated that members of the board are backpedaling and wasting our time. I'd like to remind the group of the unanimous board vote that Dr. Steinhoff has pointed to multiple times. I certainly understand the procedural changes that are needed. We want this to be inclusive. I want everyone to be involved and feel seen and heard. We cannot waste any more time. We need to reopen safely. We need to get people on board, the board members, parents, students, and staff on our CARES Committee, and we also need to make some changes. This is the second time in six months where there has been a social media fiasco where the press have been invited. There must be a board resolution to come up with standards for social media activity, particularly ones that are public and are to engage and confuse the public. I'm thrilled that this will be considered for the CARES Committee. I think that that needs to be voted unanimously once again. And I ask for the resignation of Ms. Essler immediately. Thank you.
Dr. Steinoff, we've reached our half hour. We will have a fifteen minute session at the end for public comment.
Okay, let me take a moment to capture who has already indicated that they'd like to speak to so that we don't neglect the opportunity to meet them. And I have those names down here as well. And okay. Thank you.
Please keep your hand raised, and we will get to you in the order in which you are in line. Thank you. Ten point zero one is items for board action. They start on page two, go through page three, page, and conclude on page four. I would like to make notice to ten point zero two, number five. Once again, we have to notify the public that we regretfully report the death of, death of one of our part-time custodians at Northly, Mr. Michael Paparo. Unfortunately, this is the second meeting in a row that we had to, to announce something like that, but we need to let the public know that what's going on. So with that, this references the Pendelco Budget twenty twenty-one, Act Ninety-three Plans, P D A Agreement, P D E S P A Agreement, P D S S P A Agreement, the P A School Code one one zero eight B. It is administrative recommendation to approve all personnel items as presented. Do I have this motion?
So moved.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion passes. I do need to add a motion to the agenda. It is item one zero point one five. It will read is the approval of the resignation notice for employee seven six three, one two four three as presented. Tonight, the board will utilize a consent agenda for items ten point zero three through ten point one five. If any member wish an item from the consent agenda removed, please notify me now, and we'll remove it and vote individually with that.
I'd like to remove ten point one four for a separate vote. I'd like to make a motion to do that.
Let's approve. So ten point zero three through ten point one five excluding ten point one four. Do I have this motion?
So moved.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Ten point one four is the Pendelco School District Diversity, Education, and Inclusion Steering Committee. Motion is to approve the PDSD Diversity, Education, Inclusion Steering Committee Resolution as presented. Do I have this motion? I moved. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Closed?
No.
Mr. Zebby, roll call, please.
Mrs. Denny?
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Essler?
No.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Seesock?
Yes.
Mr. Tinsley?
Yes.
Mr. Armour?
Yes.
Seven one, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Zebby. Number eleven, we're back to comments by members of the public. Once again, we have fifteen minutes. Each each visitor is required to state their name and address, and we are back to fifteen minutes, three minutes per person. First, we have Sarah Constantine. Was that, was that our next one, Dr. Steinhoff?
Was. Ms. Sarah Constantine has been promoted as the panelist. It looks like it didn't pass over, so let me try again. And she will be on in just a second.
Miss Constantine, please state your name and address for the board.
My name is Sarah Constantine, and I reside at fifteen Hoag Lane in Aston, Pennsylvania. And I'm also a proud educator at Aston Elementary. During the last five years within the district, I've had the opportunity to educate our Parkside, Covert, and Aston Elementary children. At first, I was discouraged to hear about the board's probable vote against an equity committee that would benefit our children and staff. Yes, I was discouraged and quite frankly astonished. Immediately, I view the board's probable vote against a committee focused on equity and acceptance as a vote for ignorance and unacceptance. But how would my negative attitude positively affect my students? It wouldn't. So I'm here today with an altered mindset. I'd like to thank you. Recently, I've questioned my own purpose in education. It's felt like a constantly exhausting uphill battle without a positive end in sight, but now I thank you. I thank you for helping me find my purpose again. I thank you for reminding me why I left my corporate career to become an educator. I thank you for publicly proving how much harder we educators must work to help our community change for the better. And it's a challenge I know many of us proudly accept. I thank you for motivating me to find more diverse materials to include in my instruction. I've always seen myself as extremely open-minded and accepting, but I could do better. And I will. We will. I refuse to sheepishly take a backseat to positive growth, and it would be irresponsible and a disservice to my students if I did. Committee or not, thank you for reigniting my purpose to support our children in my classroom as they continue to grow the love and respect they feel for themselves and each other. I thank you again for the fuel you unknowingly added to my mission, which will continue to benefit the social, emotional, and academic growth of our youngest citizens. I'd like to close my statement this evening by sharing a quote I recently saw by Mandy Hale. To some, growth can be painful. Change can be painful. But nothing is as painful as staying stuck in a place you don't belong. Our children don't deserve to be stuck in a world where they, their friends, and their loved ones feel as if they don't belong due to the negative mindsets of others. Our children deserve better and better they shall receive from our Pendelco educators. Thank you for voting in favor of the Pendelco CARES Steering Committee.
The next individual is Daniella Cerula. Please state your name and address for the board.
Hello?
Now we can hear you, Mr. Rula.
Oh, great. Thank you so much. My name is Dani-
Oh, great. Thank you so much. Uh, my name is Daniella Cerulo. I live at two thirty-one Spring Valley Way in Aston. Um, I am the PTL president at Sun Valley. I have a child in Sun Valley. Um, and I'm also an anti-bullying advocate. We have a nonprofit organization. Um, I have to say, first of all, um, thank you, Mr. Armour, for your opening remarks. Dr. Steinhoff. Uh, huge fan tonight. Thank you. Thank you for what you said, for what you do. I've had a great opportunity to work with you. Um, and I appreciate all that you do and that you listen to the parents and that you listen to what feedback as PTL members we are giving you. Um, what I think I have to share tonight, and I don't write things out and I I don't, I talk from the heart. And I'm going to talk from the heart right now. As a board, it is your responsibility to be role models. For not only your employees, because the teachers and the staff, they're your employees. Nowhere in this world can you get a job, have someone, your boss. Do something on social media and it be okay. It is not okay. If there are issues that people have with instructors, you need to take that up with your superintendent. That's why you have one. Not only that, it is something that should be done internally, not cyberbullying on social media. I, as a PTL member, get messages day in and day out from parents who are frustrated. And I have my son, who's in tenth grade, who says, "Mom, explain this to me. Why is this happening? Why am I having to explain this to a high schooler of the behavior of grown adults who are elected officials? If this is something that you can't move forward on, you really need to self-reflect and decide if this board is where you belong. Okay, we work really hard to try to help our children. And get through the pandemic and get through other, we don't need any of this other stuff. So please, take it tonight. Take it with you tonight when you go to bed and think about what it is you're doing to reflect a being a role model. Um, so I I just wanted to share that because it is something that we work real hard. To be a part of the Pendelco School District and bring some great things to our children. And we work really hard too as volunteers. So we would appreciate you rethinking um. How you come across on social media. We we talk every day about our kids bashing and cyberbullying. And and doing things on all kinds of of sites, TikTok, Snapchat. Adults are just as bad. So this can't happen anymore. So maybe like we tell our children, think before you speak, the board needs to do the same. Um, we have parents in the district who are experts. Um, on the subject of DEI. We've offered services for free to the district. Again, Dr. Steinhoff, we're offering services for free to the district. If that is something you'd like to take us up on. So I thank you once again, uh, Mr. Mr. Armour. Armour and Dr. Steinhoff, thank you again for um all the hard work and the rest of the board members. Thank you.
Mr. Armour, the next individual with their hand raised is Jude Saunders. Please state your name and address for the board.
Hi, my name is Judy Saunders. I live at sixty-two East Chelton Road in Parkside. I'd like to talk about the cares committee. I I just want to thank you. I really want to thank you today. Watching this and I came into it with really bad expectations because I did see the social media post of one of the board members. And I just had it in the pit of my stomach that somehow we were going to footfall on this and not do it right and. You guys proved me wrong, all of you, well, most of you, and I really appreciate that. I am so happy to know that this is the school district that my children graduated from. I can say that with pride. I think you are opening up a discussion, at least coming to the table. To look at important issues to all of the children because all lives matter. And you should make sure that every single child's life matters to make that a reality. So I cannot tell you how proud I am of you right now in this moment. Um, President Armour, Dr. Steinhoff, uh, most of our school board members. From the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saunders. And we are out of time with the fifteen minutes. Thank you, everyone who chimed in, gave us your opinion. Anyone who has any uh specific questions, the board can be reached through email as well as Dr. Steinhoff. Uh, Mr. Kamenka and Mr. Zebly if needed. All right, um, with that, do we have any comments by members of the board? All right, we'll see if there's none. Uh, future meetings, our next meeting is March seventeenth, the study session. Uh, at seven thirty, location is to be determined depending upon CDC guidelines and how things work out. We would like to be in person. Uh, March twenty-fourth is our business meeting at seven thirty. Once again, the location is to be determined. Motion for German? Thanks all.